I'd like to call this Meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, June 3rd. Order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth. Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a forum?
Thank you. Now, would you please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item of business is Proclamations and Presentations, and we have the Police Chief's Commendation Awards and a Commissioning Ceremony. So, I'd ask Chief Zarro to come forward and present the Commendation Awards.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson and councilmembers. We will start first. We do have a swearing-in of a new officer. Mayor Anderson, you've been gracious enough to volunteer to swear our officer in. If I could have you come down, and Officer Chris Alexander could have you step forward.
(Inaudible) 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 (Applause) 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 So, you have family here?
No, my wife actually has a flat town for business.
What, we want to wait for the photo op at the end, or you want to do?
If we could do it all at the end, that would be great.
All together?
Yes.
So, have a seat, we'll call you back up after the Commendations and take your... Thanks, sir.
Please do, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And for those of you that don't know Chris, he came to us from Milton Police as a lateral, and was actually recently awarded the State Medal of Valor for his role in an active shooter that took place in Puyallup. So, definitely a good pickup by our department and someone that I think is going to do great things for us. So, moving on from our commissioning, we do have several awards that we want to present. The first two will be to citizens for acts that they performed, acts of courage, really. The first, if I could have Stephen Gain come forward. Stephen was driving his motorcycle across the 84th Street overpass between Tacoma Mall Boulevard and Hosmer, and crossing over I-5 when he observed a female on the outside of the guardrail from the street. The female was in the midst of mental health crisis, had made the decision to jump from the overpass and onto the freeway. She did, however, once she got to the other side, change her mind, but could not pull herself back up to safety. As Mr. Gain was driving by, she yelled for help, and he heard her cries and stopped and was able to help pull her back up over the guardrail. There's not a question in my mind that she would have not, she would not have been able to do that on her own. And if you've been on 84th Street, you know how busy that is, and I also am sure that there's other people that drove by and did nothing. For his efforts and his willingness to stop, Stephen Gain is being presented the Police Chief Citizens Commendation. Okay, next, if I could have Orin Sim and Jared Sailor, if you're here. Thank you, Orin. This, this one occurred in October of last year at the wee, in the wee hours of the morning, at 0:516, a woman was attacked by her pit bull type dog, causing severe bites to her right arm in a vehicle in the parking lot of Max's Deli. Two citizen bystanders, Orin Sim and Jared Sailor, heard her screams for help, stepped in at extreme danger to themselves, and removed her from the vehicle where she was being attacked. They were eventually able to physically pull the dog away from her, getting it to release its bite of her arm from where she was bleeding profusely. Orin fought the dog away from the female with a pipe after being bitten, while Sailor shielded the female with his body. Both acted with disregard for their own safety, preventing further injury until officers arrived and were able to stop the aggressive actions of the dog. And as with Mr. Gain, it's, you know, just the, this citizen's willingness to step in and do something that made a significant difference in this woman's life, and who knows how serious the injuries would have been had they not been there and had Orin and Mr. Sailor not been willing to step in. So, for their actions, Mr. Sailor and Orin are being presented the Police Chief Citizens Commendation. Okay, could I have Officer Mike Russell come forward? So, this next award for Officer Mike Russell, who's currently assigned to a plainclothes assignment in our Professional Standards Section, performing background investigations and oversees all of our training program. In 2018, Mike was at our local Firehouse Subs and struck up a conversation with the manager there, who told Mike about a grant program that they have, where they will grant money to public safety entities for public safety purposes. Mike jumped at that chance, and for those of you that haven't done a grant before, it is not an easy task. Mike jumped through all the hoops, put in all the sweat, and did all the legwork, and he was able to receive a $25,000 grant from Firehouse Subs to purchase 30 AEDs, and those are automatic defibrillators. They're the little boxes that if somebody's having, has had a heart attack, it's really easy, you hook it up, and it's a very effective lifesaving tool. And, and I am very sure, you know, having 30 of them, we have quite a few of those out in the field now, and I'm very sure that thanks to Mike's efforts and getting those out to the field and to the officers where they'll be used, that somebody's life is going to be saved through that. So, for Mike's hard work and his initiative and his effort, he's receiving the Police Chief's Commendation. I have a large group, if I could have several people come up. Officer Sean Noble. Jeff Gum, did he make it down? Oh, there he is. Eileen McCain. CSO Mike Miller. And CSO Kevin McClure. This, this award is being presented to each of these folks for some teamwork that was done on a specific problem here in Lakewood. They're all members of our Community Safety and Resource Team, or CSRT. Many of you that follow us on Facebook or know the city might have seen the initials, and this kind of teamwork is exactly why this team was formed. You have somebody from the legal department, somebody from the police, police officers, somebody from the community service officers, and everybody that worked together to attack this one problem. And it's, was on 108th Street here in Lakewood, and without naming names, it was a property that's been a chronic problem for over 10 years, largely due to a lot of junk vehicles that were piling up, and this, this property owner kept collecting these junk vehicles, and it really was creating a sanitation and safety hazard. The neighbors around there were at their wits' end, and till this team of people finally took charge and were able to remove over 50 junk vehicles. And this was after many years of attempts, is brought to the city's abatement coordinator, which is Jeff Gum here, who worked with our legal advisor, Eileen McCain, and they attended numerous hearings with the property owner, the city hearings examiner, and Superior Court judges. The end result was the service of three search warrants, and with the help of CSO Miller and CSO McClure, 55 vehicles were removed from the property by gene stowing. The Neighborhood Association that encompasses that, that property actually talked about not having meetings anymore because that, their problem was solved. So, it's really just a testament to the effort that these folks put in and their willingness to work together. So, for all of their efforts on this, they are all receiving the Police Chief's Citation. Our last award is for detective Chris Bowle. Chris, can you come forward? This is one that I'm particularly proud to present, although it's unfortunate that we have to. You know, in police work, we frequently have to wade through some pretty vile things in the name of public safety, and this is certainly one of those. Chris is a detective in our Special Assault Unit, and earlier this year had a pretty, pretty egregious assault that he dealt with. He was called to Marybridge to investigate a child in critical condition after being treated for severe head trauma. Detective Bowle interviewed the parents of the child, who admitted that they were the only ones that had access to the child, but both denied doing anything to harm the child. Further medical exam showed bilateral jaw fractures and rib fractures that were in states of healing prior to the event that brought the child to the emergency room. Detective Bowle stayed with the investigation, twice bringing in a Tagalog interpreter to assist with the interviewing of the father, who spoke some English, but his first language was Tagalog. Ultimately, Detective Bowle was able to obtain a confession from the father of the child. This case is still pending prosecution, but the work put into this case by Detective Bowle will certainly help see it to a positive conclusion. And having worked in these, these cases and in this unit myself, I can tell you that when you have small children's victims, a lot of times, it's, it's only your effort that gets justice for these kids. And it was Chris's efforts that, on this very difficult and troubling case, that got efforts, or that will get justice for this small child. So, for Chris's efforts on this investigation, he's receiving the Police Chief's Commendation. Everybody now, just receive the award, and come back up for a picture with the council.
Come on down.
Yeah, council down.
Amazing stuff.
Say what now?
(Inaudible)
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 Say what now?
(Inaudible)
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 Say what now?
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we now have another opportunity to recognize outstanding youth in our community, in this case, the Lakes High School Dance Team for the State Championship in Hip-Hop. So... (Applause) I'd ask Coach Deb Yersley to join me up here. Is Coach Yersley here? Come on, Coach. And then, I'll have you folks line up, we have certificates for you, but if I could have a coach up here, if she's here. So, I will like to, hold, hold on back here, so people can see who you are and attach a name to it. I'd like you to line up, starting in front of Ms. Moss, as I call your name. Sophie Betcher. Jordan Bryant. Jordan. Tyler Cruz. Trina Dixon. Jade Lynn Dunca. Marissa Kurian. Angelo Nicolo. Brian Noel Villarreal. Annabelle Thomas. And Aleah Young. I'll stay right there, we'll have some certificates for you, but I'd ask your coach to tell us a little bit about your accomplishments, what you did, now you got here.
All right. Well, I like talking about them, because this is a great bunch of kids. I, I have been telling people that, so at the beginning of our season, I always do kind of a personality test, and this group came out to be a bunch of followers, and I was a little worried, because we had, we lost 18 seniors last year, and we only had four returners. And so, everyone kept saying it was going to be a rebuilding year. You know, it'll be a rebuilding year. And I and my captains didn't, weren't happy with that. We weren't happy with that. And this group, being a bunch of followers, they did exactly what they were told, when they were told to do it, and it was a great group to work with, and they worked hard. Snowmageddon fell right during our season, and postponed many of our practices for a while, and so, we had to make those up. And so, they put in four to six hour practices to make up those missed practices, and, and they were determined they were going to be more than a rebuilding team. And they could have brought home second or third, and everyone would have thought they were outstanding, but they wanted more than second or third. They, they fought for it, and they worked for it, so.
Okay, so, Coach, here I have a certificate for you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll go down the line and see if we can match the names, and then I'd ask the council to come down, and the folks get their certificates, take a photo.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. This is Sophie. Tyler.
(Inaudible)
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 (Applause)
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 (Applause) (Applause) (Applause) (Applause) (Applause) (Applause) (Applause) So, and, kind of in keeping with our theme, the next item is the Youth Council Report and Recognition, now that we're the end of the academic year, and I invite Albert James to lead off with a video.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, City Council Members, distinguished guests, and citizens of Lakewood. Tonight, the Youth, Youth Council has met for the final time for the school year, reflecting on our accomplishments and service. We wanted to take a moment of your time tonight to share with you a few of these reflections and what we have learned over the past year.
Hi, my name is Lene Skemack, and this year on Youth Council, I had a great time serving with my fellow Youth Council Members. I love putting together the Youth Summit and giving more opportunities to our Lakewood youth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deanna Pangolinan. I'm a junior at Harrison Prep, and I serve on the Lakewood City Youth Council, as well as the Landmarks and Heritage Board. And first off, I'd like to say that my first year serving on Youth Council has been a really amazing experience, and I'm really grateful to have worked with such an amazing team. And so, moving on, something that I learned this year was definitely the importance of having youth representation in our community, as well as even just being on the board, has helped me improve my leadership skills and my collaboration and communication skills, which in turn will help me as I continue to find better, better and more effective ways to serve my community.
Hi, my name is Sophia DeLeon. My favorite part about Youth Council this year was taking in the initiative to plan events in the community, while also being involved in a lot of events and things going on around Lakewood. It was really beneficial to me, because I got to learn what is, like, what the community needs and how I can help others here.
Hello, my name is Angel Lee, and I'm a part of Youth Council. I'm a freshman at Harrison Prep, and I'm loving the experience that I have gotten to experience here at Youth Council. And one of the things that I've... And one of the things that I've learned throughout being a part of this wonderful community, like a little tiny community, is that I've been more comfortable with recognizing faults that I personally see now, that by being around those who are thriving at that kind of stuff. And so, you know, and I might not be amazing at it yet, but I'm trying really hard, and I hope that one day I will, you know, be as great as I. But, yeah, and something else that I have been... I've learned is that, you know, I've been a little more confident while speaking in front of people and in front of the camera, which is something that I wasn't doing very well last year, so. And I'm... I hope to be a part of the Youth Council again next year, and thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Ramon Elijah Raffles, and I am a senior graduating from Harrison Prep this year. And something I learned being on the Youth Council this year is that there are many different outreach groups you can take part in. For example, I was in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which is something I really enjoyed, and this taught me that there's many different ways to get involved in your community. All you have to do is just do a little digging to figure it out.
Hi, my name's Katie Wilton, and I am a senior. One thing that I enjoyed this year in Youth Council was planning a major event, such as the Youth Summit. That was really fun, because it was my first time planning something that big, and I really felt like I had an impact on the event and that I helped other kids that attended. So that was really fulfilling for me. And as a senior, I'm really excited to move on and go to college, and I really hope to be involved in something like Youth Council in the next four years.
My name is Albert James, and through my three years on the Youth Council, I feel like I've become a better servant leader. From working with the City Council on youth issues, to working within the Lakewood community, to better it, I feel like I've been able to give back to the city that has given me so much. And even though my time on the Youth Council may be up, my time engaged in the civic process won't be ending anytime soon.
We want to thank the City Council for their unyielding support of the Youth Council. It is because of your support that we are able to make the impact that we have made. We also want to thank Communications Director Grimley for being our Editor Extraordinaire and putting our reflection video together. And finally, a big thanks goes out to Cameron Fairfield, who's provided a great service as our advisor for the past two years over the back. Are there any questions from council?
Questions from council? Well, we have some recognition for you folks, too, and Councilmember Bulkey is going to take the podium and recognize the folks who are here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You saw on there all the great things that this group did, just really a remarkable group of young men and women that we should all be proud of. As a city, as parents, and good group. You know, they talked about the Youth Summit, and I had to joke to them that when I was in high school, I could not imagine pulling off something like the Youth Summit with me or any of my friends, and maybe that's... And so it was just remarkable, really, how it came together. It was a very ambitious project. It took a lot of planning. It was on a Saturday. It included people from other schools, and it brought in different groups. They had speakers, they had food. It was a lot of logistics, and they did a great job. They also mentioned that they were on citizen boards, and I think that the council really does appreciate that. I hope the citizens, the adult citizens on the boards, appreciate the input that they were able to give over the year. And I think it opens up worlds to them that they see all the different issues going on in a city our size. And of course, numerous volunteer efforts, and I don't know that we could talk about them all. It's what I call the free labor, but... And I'm glad this year we were... We did a lot more than free labor, right? We did a lot of great things together. So, at that, without further ado, the first, in alphabetical order, I hope, Albert James. Angel Lee. Brian Noel. It's Brian Noel night here. Dante Ost. Deanna Pangleenen. Right? Elijah Ramon Raffles. Katie Wilton. Lenise Kamak. Megan Duncan. Sophia DeLeon. You'll notice some of them are wearing their red, that they came up with that sweatshirt idea and how they wanted... what they wanted it to look like. Therese Pacio. And the other folks... I think we had twenty-four in all, so... And I think we're looking at another big group next year. A number of these folks will be back. Who are the seniors that are leaving us? All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, stay right there. Council's going to come down for the obligatory photo section. Yeah, that's probably where my glasses are here. I'd just like to personally thank the departing seniors for helping take this over the last few years to a new level, and we look forward to the returners next year. As with the dance team, it's not a rebuilding year, it's a building year on top of what you already done. So, thanks again for all you have done and will do. We appreciate the youth leadership, and somebody's got to prepare to take over from the old guys. So now we move to the Clover Park School District Report. Is school director here tonight? I don't see anyone out there. Nope. So, it's summer vacation. We now move to the Public Comment section of the program. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue pertinent to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Yellow light comes on with a thirty-second warning. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please indicate your name and city of residence, such as Jason Wayland, Lakewood, Washington. First person who signed up is Dennis Howgan.
Dennis Howgan, Lakewood, Washington.
...
Toast. I give... That's all the people who have signed up to speak. If anyone else wishes to speak at Public Comment, please step forward. Does anyone else wish to speak at Public Comment? Seeing none, I declare Public Comment closed. We now move the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, Approval of the Minutes of the City Council Study Session of May 13, 2019. B, Approval of the Minutes of the City Council Meeting of May 20, 2019. C, Approval of Claims Vouchers in the Amount of $1,768,639.49 for the period of April 24, 2019 through May 15, 2019. D, Approval of Payroll Checks in the Amount of $2,398,410.31 for the period of April 16, 2019 through May 15, 2019. E, Motion Number 2019-32, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Hemisphere Design and Marketing in the Amount of $179,250 for the Lakewood Imaging Campaign Development. F, Motion Number 2019-33, authorizing the rejection of all bids for the construction of the 2019 Citywide Electrical Repair Project. G, Motion Number 2019-34, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with B.C.R.I.A. Inc. in the Amount of $584,198.3 for the design services related to the Onyx Drive Southwest Project. H, Motion Number 2019-35, authorizing the execution of a contract for electrical services with the Town of Silicon. I, Resolution Number 2019-11, adopting the Six-Year 2020-2025 Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Program. J, Resolution Number 2019-12, authorizing the execution and delivery of an interlocal agreement regarding South Sound 911, approving the formation of South Sound 911 Public Authority by the City of Tacoma, and approving other matters related thereto. K, Items Filed in the Office of the City Clerk. I, Lakewood Arts Commission Meeting Minutes of April 1, 2019. II, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of April 17, 2019. III, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of April 25, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? I'd only note that with respect to the item involving South Sound 911, that there's a provision delegating to the city manager the authority to make some changes. I would expect that that means non-material changes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to Motion Number... Excuse me. Ordinance is Ordinance Number 706. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 706, Amending Lakewood Municipal Code Chapters 18A 5600 through 18A 5680 Related to Signs.
For this, we have Ms. Brunel.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, I'm here to present the newest draft of the revised sign code. The last draft was shared on April 1st. This evening, we have prepared a presentation to summarize the significant changes. We're going to pull that up first. To start as a brief recap, the reason we are amending the sign code is to bring it into compliance with Reed v. Gilbert, a 2015 Supreme Court decision that has changed how signage is addressed throughout the country. The major shift after the Reed decision was that signs could no longer be regulated based on content. For Lakewood, this required us to revise substantial sections of our existing code, including the definitions, exemptions, prohibitions, and temporary sign code sections. In an effort to keep our old sign types but redefine them in a content-neutral manner, we realized that we created a code that was more complicated than necessary, particularly in relation to the temporary sign section. So we went back to the drawing board to reevaluate what works well in our community and what potential problems we are aiming to address. This evening, we will review the recommended changes to the temporary sign code, after first looking at the existing code and the draft presented on April 1st. Next, we will share examples of how temporary signs prohibited signs, and review the new definitions and address a recurring question: How might we regulate signs in the right-of-way? Looking at the existing side code table shared in the next several slides, you may... You'll see many sign types, all defined by their content. The number allowed is defined also by content and varies between one to unlimited, depending on the sign type, and the maximum size ranges from four to 32 square feet. The draft sign code presented on April 1st attempted to keep these various sign types in the existing code and created three new sign types with various regulations. We proposed to limit the number allowed on private property. During the council meeting on April 1st, this approach was questioned, because limiting the number of signs on private property only works if the city can prove a compelling government interest. In addition, we received feedback that this was somewhat confusing with the many sign types. This brings us to our revised table. With the goal of simplifying and making new regulations as similar as possible to the existing code, which we know works well for our community, we made the following significant changes. First, we removed the limited-duration sign type and made all temporary signs just temporary signs. We removed the limitation on the number of signs allowed on private property or in the public right-of-way, with the exceptions of roundabouts, traffic islands, and gateway locations, which I will explain more in a moment. The proposed code would not require any permit for temporary signs, which resulted in us changing the size and height of the temporary signs based on best engineering practices. An enforcement will occur based on the provisions highlighted in red, which include the prohibited sign code section, general standards for signs in the right-of-way, and an emphasized sign maintenance standards. sign maintenance standards. Before diving into the prohibited sign code and new maintenance sections, we wanted to illustrate the types of signs that would be permitted under the revised code. Temporary sign standards are similar in all zones, with the exception that banners in residential zones are slightly smaller than what is allowed in commercial zones, which is similar to our existing code. Portable signs include sandwich board or A-frame signs. The reason that these are separate from temporary signs is because they are in no way mounted onto a building or permanently affixed to the ground. And thus, we have additional requirements that they be removed daily to ensure they do not become hazardous. The timeframe from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. was borrowed from neighboring jurisdictions and is the standard found in the American Planning Association's model ordinance. Earlier today, Council Branstad requested for additional information on how we will enforce the inclement weather standard. The staff recommendation is to strike that provision, since it is difficult to define inclement weather and instead use the maintenance section of the code to enforce fallen portable signs be removed. This change has not been incorporated into the ordinance this evening. So rather than limiting the number of temporary signs, which we have already discussed, is difficult to do, we are proposing to add several sign types and locations to the list of prohibited signs. This slide shows the proposed regulations compared to the existing code. The new regulations include a prohibition of temporary signs installed at gateway locations or traffic islands located within the public right-of-way, and roundabouts, except when expressly allowed by the city engineer via a right-of-way permit. Additionally, we added feather banners to the list of prohibited signs based on previous council comments. Next, the draft code includes additional maintenance standards, which will hopefully address the concern of single-use signs being up for an extended period of time. It's important to note that the Reed ruling may result in any number of signs being up for after the useful life of the message. However, it stands to reason that a sign created for a standalone event is likely not particularly sturdy, and the sign's useful life is probably limited, but by its construction rather than its message. The city is requiring that even the flimsiest of signs be maintained and not torn, fallen, or faded.
We have a question. Just a quick question on the prohibited signs. Under the 1, 2, 3, 4th line down about blimps, inflatables, so there are a few folks here that have gone beyond the grand opening opportunity, and they have inflatable gorillas or, you know, whatever. Yeah, I don't mind them, but would they fall within the nature of a blimp or inflatable in this case and be prohibited?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
And I'll add that that is in line with our existing code as well. That was also prohibited.
Right. He's still there, but...
So here's an example of prohibited signs in the draft code. So you'll see the signs located in the traffic island, the feather banners, signs affixed to utility poles, the large inflatable, as well as roof signs.
Godzilla. I think that was on Simpson's coffee stand.
We also wanted to highlight the new and amended definitions since the April 1 council meeting, including abandoned signs, feather banners, gateway, roundabouts, temporary sign, and traffic islands. Lastly, for signs in the right-of-way, we have discussed if a proposed limitation to the number of signs is allowed in light of both the Reed decision and the Washington State Supreme Court decision, Collier versus the City of Tacoma, which was issued in 1993. In the Collier ruling, the court very specifically invalidated aspects of the Tacoma sign ordinance, which restricted free speech. Although Collier involved campaign signs, under Reed, any sign involving protected speech would likely receive the same analysis, meaning the city would need to show a compelling government interest in order to prohibit signs in the right-of-way, which under Collier was ruled a traditional public forum. With this, we have the following recommendation. Generally allow signs in the right-of-way so long as they do not present a hazard to public health or safety, and those that may, and those that do may be removed without prior notice. Next, prohibit all signs installed at gateway locations and traffic islands located within the public right-of-way per request of the City Council and supported by the City Parks and Recreation and Public Works and Engineering Departments. Prohibiting signs in gateway locations serves a compelling government interest based on aesthetics and the fact that the city has spent a substantial amount of time and money improving the gateway areas. Signs located in traffic islands are a public safety risk, per the city engineer, because they may reduce the visibility across multiple lanes of traffic. Next up, roundabouts. The majority of the roundabouts in the city are mountable roundabouts and meant to be driven over by oversized vehicles. Placing signs in these locations would not be permitted. Signs placed in roundabouts with center landscaping and distinct curbs may be allowed via a right-of-way permit, so the Public Works Engineering Department can review the location to ensure it would not impact visibility or traffic flow. For next steps, once council approves ordinance number 706, the amendments will become effective in 30 days. During that time, the city will initiate public outreach to inform the public of the pending changes. Any questions?
Questions. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you do me a favor and flip back to the slide, which the gorilla, the gorilla appears in this slide? Oh, Godzilla. Now, am I to take from this that in the upper right-hand corner, the honeydew donuts, that would be prohibited by this code?
Yes, it's considered a roof sign.
And the reason I'm asking is this. The four sign examples to the left are temporary. The one to the upper right appears to be permanent. Now, how and why are we drawing that line?
So the prohibition on roof signs is the same as what we currently have in the existing code.
Okay.
All roof signs are considered legal non-conforming that currently exist.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
Just a point of clarification on that. If, for example, the building was constructed with a certain fascia, where you see, you know, lighted signage, that would be, of course, okay. It's the rooftop signs that we're trying to get away from, and that's, they're few and far between anymore. I think we've taken care of most of them in town, but that's the reason for it.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. So in the, on the slide that you were asked to look at, where Godzilla wouldn't be allowed, which I find very disappointing, actually, but Bill Doherty Kia would be allowed.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so because that's on the, that's considered a what kind of sign?
A roof sign.
A roof, okay.
In that case, that's also an inflatable, which is why it was selected for this picture.
Okay. So, so the roof sign on the side of the building is okay, but the rooftop is not?
That's actually considered a wall sign.
Oh, that's considered a wall sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the wall signs are okay?
Yes.
Okay, because people build buildings like that. Godzilla is not?
Correct.
That's, again, very disappointing.
So he's attached to the wall.
But if we attach Godzilla, okay. So my other question, just, just to make sure, we made a lot of changes here. Are there any other changes besides the, the ones you just went through with the feather banners and some of the other things? Did we make any changes at all in here to height requirements, size requirements, those kind of things in commercial areas?
No. There were no suggested changes to the permanent sign code table, with the exception of the distance between pole signs, which we discussed at the previous meeting, which formalizes an administrative policy and is something we've been practicing for several years.
Okay.
And the, including the square footage on the 200 total allowed sign area that was recommended by Councilmember Branstad earlier today.
Okay, so go back on that one.
So before, we just had 200 allowed per area, and we included SF for square feet after 200.
Oh, okay. All right. So, so height and si, height and width limits and overall size are the same in this code as they were prior?
For permanent signs, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then I will note that the realtors gave us the go-ahead. They thought that the changes were fine now, that the amendments, I guess, to this are okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
So, lower left on the slide, that one's prohibited because, it's a, it's not a roundabout.
It's in a traffic island.
Traffic island. Go back into the slide. One more on the other picture. So, and there was another one with street sign, yeah. The right-of-way coming into City Hall, for instance, I think it's right-of-way. I know some of this is private, some of it's public, but what limits the business owners from having a plethora of those A-frame signs, and then we have a boatload of political signs in the grassy median or area, and then the A-frame signs on the sidewalk? Because I can see in our interest of being a little bit more flexible, which is good, and a little bit more inclusive, we could be inviting a little bit of chaos. What's the thought about that?
Currently, in the existing code, political signs, there's no limitation for the number. There's also, there's a limitation for the number of A-frame signs, but it's one per commercial unit, and so...
That's the same, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, there's, there's no limitation now for sandwich board or A-frames.
Right.
So they could, in theory, have additional.
So a business now could have two or more?
Correct.
One on one side of the street, one on another?
Correct. The, the idea with the more flexibility in allowing for additional is that we would address cases where there is a potential hazard, whether it be with visibility in the section per the city engineer determining if there's a visibility or if something's unsafe. The other concern with things being unsightly, the way that we had discussed with the legal department addressing that type of issue would be under a nuisance rather than through the sign code.
Oh, boy. Okay.
If it reached that level.
Right. Which is, again, subject to the discretion of...
Yeah.
Mr. Buwer, we have that box again in every one of our code sections.
And yet, and yet to be defined. So it's not specifically in this section, so it wouldn't be addressed per the sign code. It would be per our nuisance.
Okay.
So one of the things that makes the plethora of political signs a little more tolerable is that there's, they're temporary, but they're temporary in the sense that when the election's over, they go away. Now, if we have, or they can be immediately removed if they didn't comply with prior rules, now we have a situation where potentially, if you are promoting a real estate subdivision or buying ugly houses or wanting to provide yard service, that you could have a sign every 10 feet, like political season, 24/7/365. Has any thought been given to limiting the timeframe of right-of-way signs? Not content-based, but we could make a timeframe that is limited for a particular period of time during the year, so they truly would be temporary.
In the prior draft, we had suggested allowing for temporary signs to be displayed for up to 120 days per year, and the date that they were installed written on the sign type, because we were having a difficult time finding a way that we could enforce limiting the amount of time that a temporary sign was there without either requiring a permit or in some other way indicating how long it had been.
What about August 1st to November 15th? Can we do that?
I don't see...
Irrespective of, irrespective of content?
Just the three months or four months?
Yeah. If it, God, I'm not suggesting we do it at this point, but if, if it is a problem.
We, we did, we did suggest something very similar to that in the open space and recreation zones for portable and temporary signs, that they were only allowed during certain times of year, which coincided with, for example, the farmer's market and our Christmas event. And so I do, I don't see why that would be an issue, but we would definitely need to discuss it with our legal team.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a follow-up. The mayor's question about time, I was wondering about, was there, I'm more curious than anything else, was there any discussion about limiting the number of signs?
Yes. We also, in the previous draft for temporary signs and limited duration, or temporary limited and portable, we limited the number of signs, because during the task force and the Planning Commission level, this was a concern, that there would be a proliferation of signs, and how could we limit or prevent that from happening? However, in Washington State, we face this really unique circumstance where we have to balance these two Supreme Court cases, one at the state level and one at the Supreme Court level. And our legal team put together some additional information on how that balance may result in having additional signage, because by restricting the number of signs that folks can have in the right-of-way, which in the Collier decision, to my understanding, was called out to be a traditional public forum, we limit candidates that may have fewer means from being able to have as much signage out as those that may have more people that are interested in them or they're more popular. So they would be able to have, more likely to have more signs. So if we were to limit the number of signs to five, let's say, and I think that that's the scenario that we gave during a previous council meeting, then that sixth guy is kind of out of luck unless he's particularly popular if we limit the number at any individual private property or in the right-of-way.
I'm not following. Say you have six candidates. Say they're limited to 50 signs apiece. How is anybody losing out there?
That's not an approach we considered.
That's not what?
That's not an approach we considered. If we limited one to each candidate...
The reason behind my question, and by the way, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, this isn't something that has to be done again right away, is that we are walking a fine line here. And we are, as you have indicated, flexible. Sometimes flexibility gets irksome when you can't go down a street and not see 400 signs. And I'm wondering if maybe, given the size of the city and given the argument or the statements you just made, maybe we say, when you run for political office, you're limited to X number of signs. You limit business signs. And so I'm, I'm curious. I mean, I understand we can't limit content, but we can certainly limit the number of outlets of that content, can we not?
I think that that would be, it's a different approach than what we considered, because we no longer have political signage, right? We have temporary signs, because we can't look at a political sign and determine, we can't look at a sign and determine if it's political any more than we can if it's that we buy ugly houses.
Understood. Okay. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say that as we've gone through a process that started well a year ago, that the feedback that I've received and what I've observed in terms of you and your team, in terms of working to address all the different perspectives that people that come at the issue of a sign code, has been done very well and has, and has been very appreciated even by people that didn't get exactly what they wanted. And so you and your folks should be commended for the work that gets us to this evening. I wanted to, as we, as we talk about the number of signs, and sometimes it's very possible to be pretty negative and envision things over there, but we have really moved to a point of where we are looking in, particularly in the area of temporary signs, for the owners of sign to do some self-enforcement in terms, signs are no longer needed, take them down, you know, make good decisions about what's, what's appropriate and, and, and what is not appropriate to the point where you're, you heard your own message in terms of being able to go and do that. And we'll be able to judge whether there are any unintended consequences of the adopting this track, probably come after November. But I wanted to clarify two points right now. The, the feedback that you gave us and the recommend, staff recommendation of what we should adopt is actually substitute ordinance 706, as was distributed to us today?
Yes, that is correct.
So when we move forward to adopt something, we should be considering substitute ordinance 706, and that's what your presentation is in line with?
Yes.
Okay. And then I had, you know, and I appreciate you, you're mentioning that at the 11th hour, I brought up the issue about the one provision that involved inclement... I brought up the issue about the one provision that involved inclement weather, but I'll take that up with my colleagues after we actually have a motion on, on the table. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any further questions? Mr. Bulkey?
Temporary signs in the right-of-way, you pull them, somebody puts them in, are, what is our policy? Do we, is our policy to inform these people if there's a phone number on there that we're going to call them, hey, we got your signs, or do we just toss them?
I, from my understanding, we're not required to do, to do that. What we have been doing is keeping them in the storage area, regulated by our operations and maintenance team for a period of time. I'm not sure what we would choose to do in the future if we ended up having to pull signs.
Okay. Anything else? Entertained a motion?
May I move it out? I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt substitute ordinance number 706. Is there further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
That I am happy with where we've gotten to in terms of this ordinance, and I had just one area of concern, which was addressed in the presentation, because it's something that I only brought up today, but that it is a, an item that occurs on page 32 of the substitute ordinance. And I'm concerned that one of the expectations of the community is that what we put in the sign code will be enforceable, that indeed, over the period of time since the Reed and Gilbert decision where we've had, think provisions where we've not been enforcing, that's been a source of some of the concerns that is expressed by citizens. So on page 32, and under its, I was, I was looking at the, the section under hours of display, where it says, "All portable signs must be taken in during inclement weather." And inclement weather is not a defined term in the code. It isn't, it isn't a term that I think the seven of us would define exactly the same. And even if we did, I am not certain, and this refers to A-frame signs, that during inclement weather, if a windstorm should come up or serious storms, I'm not sure that we want citizens running out there trying to wrestle all their A-frame signs inside, being able to go and do that. I just, that doesn't, it doesn't even seem safe to me. Owners of A-frame signs, which are not inexpensive, will, will, will take whatever measures they regard. If they leave, if they are out in inclement weather to the point that they'd be damaged, there are other provisions of the code that will deal with that. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the ordinance, section 18A, 50, 665, subsection C, to A, sub 2, by deleting sub 2, the, the provision about all portable signs must be taken in during inclement weather. And then, and then renumbering the, the previous provisions, so that it is just a section of sub paragraph A.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second the discussion.
Moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Moss. Is there further discussion on the amendment? I have a question. Is there a provision in the code as proposed that would allow the city to pick up signs when there was an ongoing or an oncoming weather event? And I, I, I'm old enough to remember as a 10-year-old, sitting in class, watching out the window, as garbage cans blew down the street in the Columbus Day storm on the Oregon coast and created a hazard. Mr. Branstad reference something, other provisions of the code. Is there somewhere where we could go around and pick them up if the owners aren't, so that they don't blow through plate glass windows?
There is no such provision.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Aye. The ayes have it. We now move to the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance, this motion as amended? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. We now move to- Ordinance number 712. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 712, creating Lake Management District Number 1 for American Lake and setting July 1, 2019, as the date for a public hearing on the assessment role for the district.
For this, we have Mr. Bigrin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. On May 6th, the City Council approved Resolution 2019-09, which submitted the question of creating the district to the property owners that are in the district. Ballots were mailed out on May 8th, and with a return date no later than 5:00 PM on May 28th. Ballots were weighted, so property owners had one vote for each dollar of estimated assessment to be imposed on their property, and a simple majority of votes would determine approval or rejection, and this is in line with the RCW. We received back 162 valid ballots, and of those, 154 were in favor of the district and eight were opposed. When they're weighted by dollars, it was $8,433 to 408 against. And City Council approval of the ordinance tonight will affirm the property owner's vote in favor of the district. We also received 10 yes ballots after the fact, so they couldn't be counted, but it was good to see more turnout. And the ordinance also sets a public hearing for July 1st at 7:00 PM to hear about, or the assessment role for the district, and the City Council will act as a Board of Equalization and hear objections to the assessment role. And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Bigrin. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt ordinance number 712. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your hard work on this. Resolutions. We now move to resolutions. Resolution number 2019-13. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2019-13, expressing support of the safety recommendations approved by the National Transportation Safety Board on May 21st, 2019, as a result of the investigation of the Amtrak passenger train 501 derailment near Dupont, Washington.
For this, we have Ms. Kelly Fong.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Before you is resolution number 2019-13, which expresses support of the safety recommendations approved by the National Transportation Safety Board on their May 21st, 2019 board meeting, as a result of their investigation into Amtrak passenger train 501 derailment that occurred on December 18th, 2017, near Dupont, Washington. The resolution states that the city fully supports the implementation of all safety recommendations approved by the National Transportation Safety Board, and that the city opposes the restoration of the Amtrak Cascades Line using the Point Defiance Bypass until the Secretary of Transportation, the Federal Rail Administration, United States Department of Defense Fire and Emergency Services Working Group, the Washington State Department of Transportation, Amtrak, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and the Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority fully implement the safety recommendations adopted by the National Transportation Safety Board. Alternatively, the City Council could choose to amend the resolution that is provided in front of you, or it could elect to not approve the resolution. Does the City Council have any questions about the resolution?
Question. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you write this?
Yes.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
And I think it is appropriately worded. If I had written it, it would have been a lot snarkier. That's a technical term I learned in my English class.
That's why it's nicely-
That's why it's nicely written. Entertained a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt resolution number 2019-13. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please. Pardon?
All those in favor, a snarkiness.
Well, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, nay. The motion carries. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
New business? New business?
No, Mayor.
Reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Good bless. I'd like to start off with, the city clerk would ask me that you give her a call or try and find some time this week to come in and pick up your new iPads. So we have new iPads for you, so we'll do that at your convenience and just, just let us know. A couple of weeks ago, the city, we were, we were approached by an organization called South Sound Together, and what they like to do is they'd like to put a mural down at American Lake Park along the, along the wall there, along the beach. Apparently, there's been one there in the past, and so they're currently working with our communications manager and our parks and recreation director on that. So if we get more information on that, we'll be sure to share that with you. Wish Mr. Spieth had stayed. Wanted to let you know that we, Becky Newton, our economic development manager, followed up with Westwood Financial, and they sold the clock. So they sold the clock to the firm that they hired to do an appraisal on it. At the same time, before they pulled the deal on that, they did reach out to the Lakewood Historical Society to see if they had an interest in buying it, and they said that they didn't have the financial capability to do that. So the clock has been, has been, has been sold.
So it had no tie to Lakewood, actually.
Our Public Works, representatives from our Public Works Engineering Department are going to be meeting with citizens regarding the Gravely Lake Drive, Washington Boulevard, that whole intersection area again. They're going to be meeting with them on June, June 5th, so just wanted to give you, give you a heads up on that. I think this body might be aware that there's an initiative that's going to be coming forward in, as part of the November election, Initiative 937. And if, long story short, if that initiative is approved, it would do away with our transportation benefit district, or at least the financing of it. And right now, that provides about a little over $800,000 a year in support of our transportation projects. I can tell you for, and it would go into effect on January 1st, 2020, is my understanding. And I think for 2020, I'm pretty confident that as we go through the mid-bioennial budget review, we'll probably be able to identify some one-time monies primarily from REIT or some other source, to be able to backfill that. However, as we look out at 2021 and beyond, that'll be a fairly heavy lift if we want that to come from any other general government monies. But two things. One is I just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up on the impact on Lakewood, and then secondly, this body does have the ability to hold a public hearing and to consider a resolution, either supporting or not supporting that initiative, as well as doing nothing. So at this point in time, just wanted to give you kind of a warning order on that. And again, it's initiative that'll be coming forward to the voters of Washington State as part of the November general election. Basically, it will reduce car tabs back down to $30. A bill that came up that we kind of stumbled across based on some conversations is Senate Bill 5370. And that bill establishes a state commercial aviation coordinating commission, and it came out of, we believe, the cities of Sea-Tac in Des Moines. And basically, the commission is directed to look at identifying a recommendation for a new primary commercial air aviation facility by January 2020. Basically, a new airport. Those of you, some of you might remember back in the early 90s, when the third runway was going in at, at Sea-Tac, there was talk of another regional airport. One of the options was Payne Field. Well, guess what? Payne Field is up and running now, and there are flights, Alaska, Allegiant Airlines, and I think Delta is now coming soon, is United. So there's a good number of flights coming out of there. One of the other ideas was actually Moses Lake, and actually having a bullet train go from, you know, the Puget Sound region out to Moses Lake. I will tell you, I thought that was a really good one. I liked that one myself. Another option, and the reason I'm just bringing it up to this body, is actually having commercial air at McCord Field. Now, right now, that's a military installation, so the chances of that happening are probably slim to none, if ever. But I just wanted to raise this with you and just give you a courtesy heads up, that that was a bill we kind of stumbled upon. So we're going to monitor that. Also Olympia, you know, there's an airport down in Olympia, maybe that gets expanded similar to Payne Field. But again, it was a bill we kind of stumbled on, so we just wanted to bring it to your, your attention. It didn't get too much attention in, during the legislative session. The council had asked about recognizing the students from, at Clover Park High School, as well as the principal regarding the Arlington Project. So I was corresponding with the interim superintendent late last week, and so the school board actually anticipates we'll be recognizing those folks as part of their, at their next regular meeting, which is next Monday, June 10th. And a couple of options. One is, this body could go to that meeting and, as a part of that process, express your support, you know, also, you know, even have, you know, some proclamations or something. The other option would be then to have the kids and the teacher come over here to your regular study session. And the reason I bring up June 10th is because school's going to be ending, so to try and, I think, get them to come in, you know, the latter part of June, you know, it's, I mean, the kids are going to, probably going to want to go do their own thing, so. So I wanted to throw that out there, maybe have you think, think about that, and maybe get back to me by the end of the meeting. I know I kind of short-noted on that. And their meeting starts at 6:00, by the way, so you could go to their meeting at 6:00 and then come over here for your 7:00 o'clock, and we could coordinate that with the school, the school folks. Or you could do it on your, or you could do your own here.
Who's on deck to go anyway on Monday? Because we rotate out.
I don't have that at my fingertips.
I don't mind, no.
Councilmember John Simpson. Thank you, city clerk.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think, because I was going to suggest, I think we go to them sends a much stronger message than having them come here. And I can be happy to do it.
If this body wants to do that, I'll let the school district know that, and then we'll have to notice that as a public meeting. You won't have to do a roll call or anything, but we'll have to notice it as a public meeting for you.
Depends. Well-
You'll be doing city council business.
Pardon?
You'll be doing city council business.
Well, it depends on how many people are there.
Oh, that's true. But I'm just going to play it safe and assume that more than four of you are, unless you decide right now that there's not going to be more than four.
We could do a non-quorum, then not have to have a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Send our, I think, Mr. Simpson's up, and if there's one or two that want to join him, maybe we'll do it that way.
I might show up, since I brought it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's-
Okay.
And we'll pull something together for you to, to provide the students, okay?
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
That's Monday, the 10th, right, John?
Yes, next Monday.
Next Monday, 6:00, $1,800.
So, before I start the session?
Correct. Yeah.
Custer Road between Silicon Boulevard and John Dower, construction started today, so they'll be, they'll, they'll begin work at 7:00 AM, and they'll be working eight, nine-hour shifts, so I would suggest to try and find, either leave earlier and come back after, or find alternative routes as construction's going on through that corridor. I think we're anticipating about three months or so, but most of the heavy work will get done in the next month or so. I think so, yeah, from start to finish. That's from start to finish. Yeah. But the heavy work will probably be a much smaller period of time in there. And then just as far as your calendar goes, just a friendly reminder, tomorrow is- And then, just as far as your calendar goes, just a friendly reminder, tomorrow is our season-opening farmer's market, and so we'll have ribbon cutting at eleven fifteen, and it's going to be another great year for our farmer's market to have a, if you like food trucks, we have a number of returning food trucks, but we also have some new food trucks as, as, as well. So it'll be a good opportunity to grab some lunch. And then also, if any members of the council, or the mayor, or your families, we still have some availability to attend City of Lakewood Night at the Ballpark, sponsored by a wellness committee, which is on June, June eighth. And then lastly, just want to note, next week, on June thirteenth, from eight to ten, eight to ten A.M., is our developers forum at the McGavick Center with breakfast at seven thirty. So a little bit of breakfast from seven thirty to eight, and then the program will go from eight to ten A.M. in the morning. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Then we'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss.
Briefly, I did attend the Downing for the Future event Saturday that was held at the Boys and Girls Club. The keynote speaker is, is graduating, and she's gone into the Navy, and she did an excellent job talking about how the Boys and Girls Club changed her life. She was very shy and withdrawn, and they reached out to her, and she stepped up, and now she's going into the Navy, and she's not afraid to open her mouth and speak anymore. And the food was delicious. Great turnout. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention, after all these months, it's now June, all the lights around Oakbrook School are on. Thank you very much. I'm glad we were able to work through those issues. They were put up back in February, and some of the lights went on a few weeks ago, and now they're all on, and they look wonderful. So thank you very much, thanks to our Public Works Department, through working through the myriad of issues that they had.
Mr. Branstad. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was going to talk a little bit tonight about the issue that the city manager had raised a couple of weeks ago about cybersecurity, but I think in the interest of time, because the man to my left is here and not at home at his birthday party, I think I will forego any comments and leave it to the man on my left to explain why he's here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
I mentioned to the man to my right that my birthday present to him would be to keep him late at this council meeting. So with that, I'll, yes, exactly. I've got a few comments. So only have three things. I'll disappoint you, I won't go to five, only have three things. The first involves the issuance of the permit by Ecology for the proposed treatment of Wogup Lake. So as, as we discussed last Monday, we talked about kind of being proactive with the communication as opposed to reactive, and now we find ourselves being reactive. And I know it shouldn't bother me, but in the ether out there, on Facebook and elsewhere, I am continually, perhaps not perplexed anymore by what people listen to and read and comment on, but I'm just frustrated by it, because it's always based on half-truths and less than full facts. So my thought is, if we haven't done it yet, if we can get the information out there, because otherwise, people are going to put it out there and parse it, and it's inaccurate, or at least not fully true. And it just makes us look not as good as we might otherwise look. So getting the information out there about what Ecology did, to me, is important.
Do you want to feedback to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Jason, and I, I share your frustration, but I'm always reminded of what the English novelist Evelyn, Evelyn Waugh once pointed out. Silence is the most deadly retort. We have done our job. We have nothing to be ashamed of, and I don't think we have a damn thing to explain.
No, I agree, and, and I think just putting out the information is fine without too much commentary.
But we've done it. We have done it. We have done our duty, even though I, I mean, we have done everything. I would be willing to bet we could do what you would suggest, and there would still be misinformation.
I completely agree with that.
So I think if we are silent, that is the most deadly report, retort to that kind of chatter.
I think our silence sometimes sends the wrong message, in my humble opinion, but that's just one, one comment. I don't know if you had any.
Thank you.
But I'll, I'll get to the rest of my little issues, and then you can have her. Oh, here we go. An alibi?
No. It's frustrating, and it, it angers me, because they are speaking with no basis of any fact. They want to recall, vote every council member out, which is okay with me, because I'm not going to be here, but for the rest of you who have done an excellent job, I just, I think it's wrong. Let them have their little sit-in. I mean, come on. You guys, I don't know if you don't read this stuff. I read it because I have to, but it angers me. And I think, as Jason said, put out the facts again, make them bullet point, make them, I want to say idiot-proof, but idiot-proof. These are the facts, and I don't think there's anything wrong with sticking up for ourselves, speaking out for ourselves, just to set it straight. I, I, you know, I could be wrong.
I'm always reminded that the opposite of love isn't hatred and anger, it's indifference.
Exactly.
And I think that they've had their opportunity to spew adacrises. We listened, we looked, we researched, and it's time to move on, except I do want to see before and after pictures splattered all over social media.
Right.
Picture paints a thousand, or?
There was a good one I did see, a good one with the slime, green slime. We'll use their picture and put up the after picture right next to it and note that it was their picture.
My, my second issue is, yeah, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. My only thought was not to rehash everything, was just to post Ecology's issuance of the permit and their retort to the comments. That was my only thing. I wasn't going to comment anymore on that, other than, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. One thing that I'd like us to do is to work closely with the Health Department to shorten the time post-treatment that the Health Department will take down the signs about toxic algae and make that an event.
There's plenty of confusion. Second thing related to bodies of water, I received a couple of comments from concerned neighbors on Gravelly Lake, not neighbors of mine, but residents of the city, about efforts to reopen the, the street ends, what we've known as street ends, whether they're, you know, rights of way or not, they're issues of concern for the neighbors, because people are opening them on their own. There's apparently some open fishing weekend, I think fishing starts this weekend or something, whatever that season is.
Fish without a license.
Yeah. And so there's also lots of commentary about people going to, you know, open it up and let them stop us, kind of a thing. My only point to put it out there is, again, to be proactive versus reactive, so we don't have public safety issues and people getting hurt, because it's a pretty darn steep embankment to go down from, I think it's Hilltop Lane to Gravelly Lake and outside, so, you know, the city manager's on it, and I just wanted to raise it, so all of you kind of know that there's an issue out there with constituents and safety hazards and nuisance issues on that street end. Third thing, I went to an event at a, another resident's house, I think on Friday evening it was, where they announced the fundraising and apparently grand opening of a company called Coffee Oasis, which will be located at the Colonial Center in the area to be vacated, or what, vacated by the physical therapy place, the rounded glass section on the corner, which is news to me, because I had a few people ask me, hmm, that's interesting. Coffee Oasis is headquartered in Bremerton. Its mission is to change the world for homeless youth in one community after another through evidence-based youth programs supported by excellent coffee businesses. There's a Tacoma project for youth homelessness that's taking place, and this is the financial piece of that, where they're going to put in, apparently, a significant amount of tenant improvements. This is all news to me until I was asked to donate to it on Friday, and they're going to run a, you know, first-class sort of coffee outfit out of that location, and staffed in part by young adults, so they gain job skills, which is great, and all the net profits go to the, the mission of this nonprofit, which is to assist homeless youth. So it's a great mission. I think, you know, news to me, I didn't know we even had a permit in place for that particular business in the city, but they're planning to open, apparently, quite soon. So more to follow, but it's, it's good to see people taking notice of improvements prompted by City of Lakewood work.
And it's a bad choice next to, of a location next to Dutch Brothers.
Right.
It was planning by social service committees. But, yeah, I think the proceeds actually work to house homeless youth at different locations.
Right.
Home of new location.
Yeah. All right. I just had a couple of things. I met with Connie Coleman-Lackady about scheduling some events with Sister Cities folks from Okinawa and Korea, which will be centered around Summerfest. They're going to have overlapping visits here, and so encourage you to take part when we get that ironed down a little bit, where Mr. Branstad had some suggestions, I had some suggestions. We're hoping that those are incorporated in the final planning, and these folks can have a successful visit. Right after that, I met with a man from A W C, who was shooting video for the eighty, A W C Award to the City for the Rental Housing Safety Program. And he was spending some time in City Hall, and I was probably left on the cutting room floor, there's only a couple of minutes. And I will be gone, I'll be out of state next week, all, all week. And so if, Mr. Whalen's here, the conjures.
Aye.
Anything further?
The tenth.
Yeah, the tenth. I'll be back for the seventeenth. I come back the night of the sixteen, the Sunday night, yeah. Anything further, Mr. City Manager? And we are adjourned at eight thirty-eight. But I don't break cake. We, I.